Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Public Hearing for June 16th. Thank you all for being here and thank you folks at home for listening. So we have a whole lot of public hearings this evening. The first one up is an ordinance concerning deer fencing. Assistant City Manager?
Good evening. This public hearing is on code amendments related to deer fencing standards within...
I can't hear you, Sarah. Sorry.
This public hearing is on code amendments related to deer fencing standards within the city limits. The goal of these amendments is to allow for higher fences to prevent deer from destroying vegetable and flower gardens.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request to speak form to the information just prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if you know it. You'll have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer. We'll hope for good...you'll be able to be heard. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. And we have two people signed up for this particular hearing. First up is Bradley Cook, followed by Sandra Bond. Bradley? Welcome.
Welcome, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council for taking up this issue. My name is Bradley Cook, 2188 Jepson Acres Road, Eugene, and I'm the owner of Huckleberry Fence &amp; Deck here in town. My sister recently was just visiting from Spokane, Washington, and she always admires the plethora and the variety of plants that we have here. If you've ever been to a nursery in Bend, Oregon, let alone Spokane, Washington, you get about a choice of six different types of plants that you can put in your yard. And we're very blessed here in the Willamette Valley that we're able to plant many flowers, including vegetables. And vegetable gardens seem to be somewhat of an in thing here in Eugene. Each year, we're very blessed here in this town of having these different garden tours for us to come and get ideas for our yards. And I'm constantly confronted with clients that want to protect their yards, especially in South Eugene. The deer just ravages them. And it's very frustrating because a six-foot-tall fence just won't do. The deer can clearly jump a six-foot fence, but they can't jump an eight-foot fence. So the quandary's always been, how can we satisfy our customers and stay within the code? Well, it's just not doable currently. And so we're asking for members of the council if they can please consider see-through fences to be allowed to build eight-foot tall, still in accordance with all of the setbacks that we currently have and the visual clearances on street corners. I don't know what else I have to say on this.
Don't prolong it. It's good.
Don't prolong it? Okay. I too hope to someday have my yard...my wife and I just bought a house up on Jepson Acres. We don't have a deer situation, and so we're able to not worry about tall fences, but I'm constantly crossing that. And I'm hoping that, since we just went through the Planning Commission and it seemed to satisfy what we were talking about with them, that you would be able to please consider allowing the citizens of Eugene to have their eight-foot-tall fences.
Thank you. And you left us seven seconds. Okay. So next up is Sandra Bond.
Hi, I'm the...oh, what did you need? You need my...
You introduced yourself.
I live in Eugene.
Introduce yourself.
Huh? I'm Sandra Bond. I live in southeast Eugene on East 36 between Hilliard and Donald, and I have many, many, many deer. And now we're having turkeys, but so far the turkeys aren't a problem for me. I've been working to get this done. I had Betty submit it months ago, and then we got stuck in the homeless situation. And I did go to the Planning Commission meeting, and I found some of the regulations that they were suggesting to the city to be quite strict and obsessive-compulsive about how far apart little pieces of wire could be. But anyway, I am hopeful that this is going to finally happen, that we will be able to do deer fences so that we can put our fruit trees out there with having to spray them with all kinds of stuff, and still that doesn't always work. You never know what they're going to eat. One time they eat petunias, the next time they don't. Then they eat your geraniums, and then they don't. And sometimes they eat my fruit trees, and sometimes they don't. But I guess that my only other concern, which deals with the deer fence, but also deals with these retaining walls, and I need to talk to somebody about how different the clearance is and where I actually can put my fence, if you guys decide we can do that. I have several neighbors right across the street who built what they call retaining walls right next to the sidewalk. And the city says because of retaining walls, they can be right next to the sidewalk, and a fence can't be next to the sidewalk. But these retaining walls are not built as retaining walls. They were at a sloped lawn, just like me, and then they came in and built a retaining wall and filled it in, so the lawn was even. So it really isn't holding up anything except for the dirt that they put there. I kind of hate to report my neighbors, but I also think that there's a whole lot of sort of unfairness here based upon them being able to do this supposedly legally because it's a retaining wall, except it really isn't a retaining wall because they put the dirt behind it, and me putting a fence. So anyway, I'm hoping that you will let us do this because people are doing it illegally, and I don't want to do it illegally and have somebody report me and have to tear it down. So thank you for your help.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from City Council, other than I think Huckleberry does a great job. Anything else, anybody? Okay, thank you. We'll go on to the next item.
I've seen a deer clear a 10-foot fence.
The second public hearing is an ordinance concerning...and this is number two, so this is an ordinance concerning redesignation and rezoning of the Willamette Stationers' property. Those...okay, so Assistant City Manager?
The City Council is to hold a public hearing on a concurrent Metro Plan Amendment and Zone Change for Willamette Stationers' property located at 510 Oak Street in downtown Eugene. The current owners seek to change the plan designation and zoning of the subject property to eliminate an existing plan-zone conflict and to facilitate future commercial use and potential redevelopment of the site. Approval of these applications would resolve the nonconforming status of the site's current use as a stationary store in an industrial zone, aligning the property's longstanding commercial use with its planned designation and zoning. The draft ordinance provided as Attachment B to the agenda details how the amendments to the Metro Plan diagram and Eugene zoning map would be implemented. The approval criteria for the amendments are at Eugene Code 9.7730, 9.8865. Findings of compliance with these criteria are provided as Exhibit B to the ordinance. So far, staff has received only favorable comments from the general public. No objections or concerns have been identified to date.
Thank you. Testimony...oh, I'm supposed to ask, do any councilors need to disclose any conflicts of interest or expertise contacts? Seeing none. Okay. "Testimony presented must be directed toward the approval criteria or other criteria that the speaker believes to apply to the decision. The failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the City Council and parties an opportunity to respond will preclude appeal on that issue. The failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the council to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court." And then it says, "Speakers will be called in the following order," although we have two speakers, and they're both in support, so I don't think we have to go through the alternate versions because there are none. So first up is Phil Farrington, followed by Maxine Walton. Yes, Councilor Polling?
Let me make sure my microphone's on. Before we start, Ms. Walton and I both are on the...
Can you talk right into the...
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Walton and I are both on the Travel Lane County Board, and I can't remember if we've had discussions about this in the past or not, but if we have, it did not influence my decision process on it in any way whatsoever. I just want to...I just want to be on the safe side because I don't remember if I've had conversations with her or not.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Farrington?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Phil Farrington with Farrington Community Planning and Development, representing Willamette Stationers. First off, I'd like to thank staff who's been assisting us on this project, Gabe Flock and Becky Taylor, who've been just terrific in their support and coordination with us throughout this process. Secondly, we'd like to request that the council take action on the proposed Plan Amendment and Zone Change tonight. We're not requesting that the action be taken via an emergency clause added to the adopting ordinance, but that by your own motion that you take action tonight rather than waiting two weeks or more to do so. Ms. Nielsen and her family are anxious to sell their property and retire from ownership of Willamette Stationers. The conflict that exists between the industrial zoning that exists and is a relic on the site and high-density residential designation effectively precludes that sale and perpetuates the nonconforming status opposed to the site's longstanding commercial use. We're confident that you'll approve this request for a commercial designation and zoning, so we'd like to allow Ms. Nielsen to begin marketing our property as soon as possible. The request before you tonight is basically a housekeeping item. Corrects has been mentioned as plan-zone conflict and removes the inappropriate industrial zoning on the site. Approving the commercial Metro Plan designation and zoning would align the subject property to be consistent with the commercial designations and zoning on adjacent properties and virtually all properties in the downtown core. As the application materials and findings demonstrate, the proposal meets all of the applicable criteria for approval. It's consistent with the policies in the Metro Plan, the Downtown Plan, and other relevant refinement plans, and the transportation planning rule as well. We've got analysis to that effect in the record. Ideally, the plan-zone conflict would have been identified and addressed through earlier development of refinement plans, but the Downtown Plan, when it was adopted, didn't include a land use diagram, so the discrepancy really wasn't caught at that time. The property has been in active commercial use and has not been vacant, otherwise probably too small to have been flagged and included among other plan-zone conflicts that were addressed through earlier planning processes. We've provided evidence that your approval will not alter the residential, commercial, or industrial buildable lands inventories, but it will further the policy objectives that are included in the Downtown Plan and other relevant planning documents cited in our application. Ms. Nielsen's been seeking this approval since well over seven months. She's hosted the Required Neighborhood Meeting at her store back in February. We received unanimous support for the project from not only those attending the neighborhood meeting, but also subsequently from the Downtown Neighborhood Association and the Eugene Planning Commission. I'd just like to reiterate, that's unanimous approval from the Eugene Downtown Planning Commission. Even the commissioners themselves remarked on how uncommon it was for them to have an open and closed hearing with unanimous support as quickly as they did that evening. So we'd like to urge you to follow those recommendations, approve this request, and take a formal vote on it tonight. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Next up is Maxine Walton.
Hi, I'm Maxine Walton. I live on Ridgeway Drive in Eugene, 97401. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I want to speak to you tonight on behalf of my mother, Elizabeth Nielsen, and my sister, Sue Crosby, and myself. We are Willamette Stationers. Willamette Stationers was founded in 1951. In 1966, the company moved to the current location of 510 Oak Street in Eugene. My mom went to work for the company in 1967. In 1984, she purchased the business, and in 1989, we were able to exercise a five-year option to purchase the building. This was done with thoughts towards financing our retirement. We were unaware of any zoning issues. When we made the difficult decision to close Willamette Stationers, we had no idea that journey would take us so far out of our comfort zone. And I want to publicly thank the City of Eugene Planning Department staff, especially Gabe Flock and Becky Taylor. They've held my hand through the whole thing. You don't get to be in business for a really long time without the support from your community. And many people have submitted written testimony on our behalf, and some have come here tonight to show their support. And in an effort to save you folks' time and avoid repetition, rather than have them all sign up to give oral testimony, if you're attending the meeting this evening in support of Willamette Stationers, would you please raise your hand? Thank you very much. And I thank you, Mayor, and the councilors, for your time and to say on behalf of all three of us, particularly my 84-year-old mother, that we are hoping for a positive and speedy resolution to this matter. Thank you very much.
At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. And since there's no request, we'll leave the record open. The record is also closed. Council is scheduled to act on this item on June 23, 2014. Are there any questions that councilors wish to ask of staff? Seeing none. Okay. So I'm going to just say a couple things. I want to appreciate the appreciation of staff. Thank you for that. And I also want to thank you for being a business that really was a good player in our community and mattered to a lot of people. So thank you for the years of Willamette Stationers being in our downtown. We appreciate it very much. So we're going to move on to the next public hearing now. This is an ordinance concerning unruly gatherings and amending 4.670 of the Eugene Code. Assistant City Manager?
Sorry. I was just looking at the other...they had requested the motion for you to take action tonight, and so I was just clarifying with Jerry that whether that was something that you would pick up later tonight or whether your vote was just a...
Oh, I just...when I asked the question, I was looking to see if anybody wanted to...
Yeah, that's what I was just clarifying with him, too. Was his understanding that they'd be doing that later or...
Did you want to say something?
I was going to suggest that we go through the rest of the public hearing. I would make a motion on this after we've heard.
As would I.
Got it right?
Okay.
All right, so we'll do it that way.
Okay, thank you. The council has asked for options for increased enforcement and education regarding the illegal discharge of fireworks. This proposed ordinance adds unlawful use of discharge of fireworks as an offense which defines an unruly gathering. This will hold a party host responsible for the illegal discharge of fireworks at their party, either at their property or adjacent property.
Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request to speak form prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You have three minutes to speak. There are lights on the timer. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. We have one person signed up, and that's Leonard Epstein. Leonard?
Welcome. Thank you. Let's see how I can do this. This is good. Good evening. I'd like to read a letter from the Eugene Southeast Neighbors Association Board members. And in the interest of...
I was going to ask you to talk right into the...
In the interest of keeping your interest as well...
No, we like the loud part. Go ahead.
In the interest of keeping your interest and not repeating myself, a little bit of this relates to items three and four, but it's short and it won't take that long. So the letter is, "In response to significant concerns about illegal fireworks that are often extremely loud, potentially dangerous to health and property, disruptive, and frightening to both residents and their pets, Eugene Southeast Neighbors Association Board members are writing this letter in support of the City Council's initiative to amend the social host ordinance to include unlawful fireworks usage as part of the list of offenses that can trigger the social host's liability, to limit the usage of all fireworks to three days in July, December 31, and January 1, and to support police and fire department funding for police education and enforcement. As fireworks season rapidly approaches, we would like to see enforcement of fireworks ordinances viewed as a priority, much as has been the case when implementing the social host ordinance in response to citizens' expressed concerns about disruptively loud gatherings. Only if authorities take action to enforce current laws will there be progress in deterring unlawful and dangerous fireworks behavior." Thank you for assisting...for your assistance in this matter. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask if there are any questions or comments from council. Councilor Taylor?
I think we should definitely limit the use of fireworks. I wish we were doing more than is proposed, but I will support what is being proposed.
Thank you. Councilor Polling did...no. All right, we're going to move on then to the next public hearing, which is an ordinance concerning restrictions on fireworks. Assistant City Manager?
The City Council has asked for options for increased enforcement and education regarding the illegal discharge of fireworks. This proposed ordinance establishes a limit for the discharge of legal fireworks for July 3 through 5, and December 31 and January 1.
Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Those wishing to speak must have submitted a completed request to speak form before the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You have three minutes. The lights are on the timer. The red light indicates the end of those three minutes. We have two people signed up to speak, Emily Fox and Jean Mosher. Emily, welcome.
Hello, I'm Emily Fox, and I live at 455 East 31st, and I'm in Ward 2. And I support the ordinance of limiting the days that you can have fireworks. Last year, one of my neighbors, young neighbors, did not use fireworks on July 4, and I thought, oh, good. And then about anyways, a few days to a week later, I heard it every night for a week. And my cat is terrified, runs under the bed. And in general, I would like to float the idea that maybe next year, you can have designated parks in every area of town where people can use fireworks. Often, my street is like a haze of smoke. It smells like I've been in a war zone. And often, July 4 is a hot day, and it seems ridiculous having to close windows and doors for hours so that I can breathe. And I'm sure I'm not the only person in this town who feels the same way. So if you could think about that idea for next year, meanwhile, I hope you pass this ordinance that we limit the amount of days for fireworks. Thank you.
Jean Mosher is next. Jean?
I came down at the last minute here. I was just reading the paper.
Will you introduce yourself, please?
Excuse me?
Will you introduce yourself? Introduce yourself, please.
Oh, I'm Jean Mosher?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm just one more person who has pets who spend several days being terrified every year. It's not fun. There's always seems to be one fellow on the block who's got $500 to spend on fireworks, and he and his kids let them loose for several days. I'm just fed up. I've lived here 30 years, and I'm just fed up with having to look forward to the 4th of July with dread every year. And lately, New Year's as well. I mean, nobody knows what they're celebrating. They're just out there making lots of noise, having a good time, and everybody within two or three blocks or four blocks is just dreading it. I talk to a lot of people through the year who have animals as well, and we all dread this time of year. I wish there were no fireworks at all, except for the public fireworks display. That's what I think.
Thank you. I close the public hearing. What I did want to do is share with you the memorandum that we have from Chief Kearns and Eugene Police Department and Chief Randy Groves with the Eugene Springfield Fire Department. And it goes in several categories about what they're planning to do this year. Prevention: The Fire Marshal's Office and the Police Crime Prevention Unit are preparing flyers that make clear which fireworks are legal and which are illegal. The flyer will explain that we will enforce laws related to fireworks in concert with our fire department and our Metro Explosive Disposal Unit. The flyer will also advertise an email and anonymous telephone tip line and a fireworks amnesty turn-in for the end of June where people in possession of illegal fireworks can dispose of them without concern of being charged with possession of them. The second feature is outreach. The flyer will be distributed to the media, neighborhood watch groups, neighborhood associations, firework vendors, and through social networking media. Communication to our residents will emphasize the hazards of illegal fireworks, benefits of the turn-in event, and the consequences related to enforcement. Residents will be encouraged to notify the tip lines of homes in their neighborhood that chronically use illegal fireworks. Information generated by the tip line will be used in enforcement efforts. Turn-in Event: The turn-in event will be staffed by the Eugene Springfield Fire Marshal's Office and the MEDU. Individuals that deposit their illegal fireworks during the event will not be subject to enforcement for the possession of fireworks they surrender. Enforcement: The police department will deploy extra officers on Friday, July 4, from 8 to 4. Fire crews will patrol neighborhoods, observe, and report illegal fireworks activity. Follow-up: An after-action report will be prepared that will inform our plans for the next year. Media outreach will again encourage residents to use the email and telephone tip line to let us know which homes' use of illegal fireworks were problematic over the July 4 weekend. That means you have responsibility in this, too. And Next Steps: Other communities have found that changing an established pattern of misbehavior with illegal fireworks takes time. We plan to steadily increase our public outreach and enforcement efforts over the next few years, believing that the combination will bring about the desired results. Any other...yes, Councilor Polling, and then Councilor Surratt.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I want to thank the Chief Kearns and Chief Groves for working on this. It's not a fix-all. It's...to me, I consider it the first step in many steps to correct an ongoing problem. I do have a question in reference to the tip line. Is that just going to be available during the 4th of July weekend, or the...if this current ordinance that we're discussing passes during the days, or can it be used at any time? Because throughout the year, we have a gentleman in my neighborhood that's probably about five, six blocks from my house that tends to celebrate everything, including the L.A. Kings Stanley Cup victory. It's a good thing Miami Heat lost last night because my dog has had enough of it. She literally shakes for hours after these explosions. And I'm not talking across the street. This guy lives probably a quarter mile from me. And I have a number of people that live around him that continually bring to my attention what's going on, but I realize that these things only last...go up in the air and last for maybe 30 to 40 seconds. And then there'll be a five-minute delay, and then, you know, a whole bunch more go off again. And I know it's tough to get out and actually catch this person, so I hope that this tip line is available more than just the 4th of July weekend and that we're working on some process where people that have to live next door to this clown can actually report it and get some action other than have a patrol car drive by after the fact. And that's...in the past, I know, and I'm not faulting because I was in that same situation. It's just that's the way it is.
The tip line that's fireworks-specific will be up just as soon as we can technically get it set up, but tips can be submitted anytime using the existing online tip...excuse me, crime tip reporting. And then as we go through those, we'll pull out the fireworks ones and follow up on them as appropriate. So people can report stuff now and anytime during the year, but there'll be a fireworks-specific one up just as soon as we can technically get it running.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Surratt?
Yeah, I too wanted to say thank you for this memo and the efforts that are outlined. I think they're a good start, and as we have to acknowledge, you know, this is an ongoing process to kind of shift folks away from this kind of behavior. I really appreciate the folks who came down to testify. I know there are folks who might want to come and testify and feel concerned about coming out and calling out their neighbors for this activity, which is also unfortunate. So and to what Councilor Polling is saying, some of those folks actually have to leave their neighborhoods on the 4th of July, so they can't even say who's exactly doing the illegal fireworks because they don't stick around to deal with the mayhem that happens in their neighborhoods. I'm actually one of those people. I will be leaving my home on the 4th of July because I too have a dog who, in spite of every kind of intervention, cannot be around this kind of activity. So I have to make travel plans on the 4th of July and leave my own neighborhood, which is very frustrating. And so I share the frustration of those of you who've been dealing with this, and I'm really glad that we're taking some concrete steps, and I think this is a really good start that we can build upon. And I think this is a really good start that we can build upon and start to improve this situation in the future.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, want to express appreciation for these first few steps. I think this is good. I can support these. But I wish we were doing more. I wish we were doing more in the way of using technology to aid us in this process. I think that while these are good steps, the steps I see around enforcement, I know it's a staffing issue, but I wish we were more creative in that regard, because I see this as predominantly an enforcement issue. So I'm going to ask a question about what's possible, just because I know other people are watching this. Red light cameras catch people where they're set up. Running a red light, the time, day, and all the information is captured, and oftentimes, municipalities that have those cite based on that as sufficient evidence. So my question is, if somebody's walking around on the Fourth of July with an iPhone, like mine, or like any other of the hundreds and thousands of them in our community, when I take a picture with this out in front of my neighbor's house, and I see them lighting something, there's an exact X, Y, longitude, and latitude that's listed on this particular photograph that's tagged to it, there's an exact time of day and date, is that sufficient evidence for someone to be cited for illegal fireworks?
The -- without getting into the various issues of surveillance and technology options that we might be able to look at down the road, I think the important piece is for folks to remember that unlawful use of fireworks is a crime, which means that we can make arrests and take enforcement action based on probable cause. So enough evidence that gets us to that point would allow enforcement action. That might very well be one piece of that evidence. I wouldn't want to say just a picture will do it without -- to set up a false expectation. But if anybody thinks you have to be witnessing the offense in order to have enforcement action take place, that isn't the case. We just have to have enough evidence to follow up and make the case.
I spent a lot of years creating Fourth of July fireworks displays, the big, you know, legal community-type ones, to know when somebody's got a box of 1- and 2-inch shells, and I know what that looks like, and I know they're pretty prevalent in our community. I'm sure you know what they look like, too. So if I saw a neighbor with a, you know, light in a box of 1-inch shells that are going to go up in the air and explode, and you could see that person's face when I took that picture, would that, under those particular circumstances, be sufficient evidence to cite someone for that?
That sounds like it probably would be sufficient evidence to get you to probable cause, just like any other crime. If you've observed the crime occur, you know the name of the person who did it, the date, time, and location where it occurred. That makes a witness that we can use to make a case.
Well, certainly, we don't want to encourage neighbors to get into close and maybe heated discussions with one another, but I would think those that want to have some effect on this might consider that as an option, because those sound like good ones to me. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Polling?
Yeah, just one other thing in reference to the ordinance that we're discussing right now. You know, I'm kind of torn between which direction to go on this at this point. You know, the fireworks, the legal fireworks being set off during the Fourth of July time and at New Year's and New Year's Eve, I understand that, and that's part of our tradition, our heritage, our way of celebrating. But we have to remember that there are other cultures within our community that use legal-type fireworks for other types of celebrations also, that don't happen to fall within these periods of times. So that's what's causing me to kind of go back and forth on this, because I don't want to restrict or prohibit somebody from a different culture or background from celebrating one of their holidays or their festivals in a way that they're used to, because the city has imposed something that is geared mostly at an American tradition.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Okay, we're going to move on to the next public hearing, an ordinance concerning single-family code amendments. Assistant City Manager?
Tonight's public hearing is on a package of land use code amendments related to single-family housing in the R1 low-density residential zone. The proposed amendments would revise development standards for secondary dwellings, dwellings on existing alley-access lots, and accessory buildings citywide, except within the university neighborhoods. Consistent with council's direction, the proposed ordinance incorporates the alternative proposal provided by community and neighborhood leaders. Action is scheduled for next Monday, June 23rd.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. And of course, those wishing to speak, it must have submitted a complete request to speak form. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the timer. The red light indicates your time is up. We have 13 people signed up. Dean Hale is first, followed by Lucinda Muniz Hale.
Hello, I'm Dean Hale of Tandy Turn in the Harlow neighborhood. I need to alert you to a serious issue with the proposed R1 zoning revisions, as changed for the university neighbors' concerns about overbuilding. This change prohibits citywide, again, citywide, the presently allowed construction of a secondary home on an R1 flag lot. Totally prohibiting these SDUs is an overcorrection that constitutes a taking. This is neither right nor proper. I am a homeowner, not a developer. My flag lot is nearly an acre in size. We have nice privacy, good neighbors, and we border Ascot Park. The next-door property was converted to a PUD with row houses. When the developer offered us a lot, we bought it to preserve our privacy. This lot already has underground utilities. Our down-the-road thinking is to build a small house for ourselves with a grown child living in our present home. Current load -- excuse me, current code allows flag SDUs in property that are 13,500 square feet or greater. My property is nearly triple that size. This is fine and fair, but the revised ordinance would prefer -- would prohibit any SDU on any flag lot throughout the city. I empathize with our South University area neighbors. They have been oppressed by development extremes. Yet, as we make policy, we have to be careful that a response to the oppressed in our overcorrection does not oppress others. My only option to preserve my current rights is to immediately hire a professional to prepare plans for submission to the building department before the effective date. But no one can do this in a week or two. Frankly, I'm stuck. Eugene can do better with this process. By the way, the notice arrived two weeks before this. The staff had three months to tell me. That's not enough time. Or perhaps I could just create my own PUD that could potentially bypass the flag lot restrictions. PUDs are generally very dense developments, but this is not my or my neighbors' preference. But that could be a consequence if I got lucked out on an SDU. The changes to the staff-proposed R1 revisions are well-meant, but an overcorrection that goes beyond the university area concerns. There are multiple unintended consequences. One simple revision would be to limit secondary dwelling units to flag lots only in the four affected neighborhoods, rather than citywide. Another alternative would be to double or triple the land size for an SDU on a flag lot from 13,000 square feet to half an acre, two-thirds of an acre, even three-quarters of an acre. This would allow secondary SDUs in spatial areas. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Lucinda Muniz Hale is next, followed by Mia Nelson.
Good evening. I'm Lucinda Muniz Hale. I live on Tandy Turn in Counselor Polling's Ward. And I'm the best, the better half of the gentleman who just spoke. I am a homeowner whose home is situated on a flag lot of nearly an acre in the Harlow neighborhood. I have lived in Eugene since 1972 in the Jefferson West Side, Churchill, and for the last 14 years, Harlow neighborhoods. Each neighborhood has a unique character, history, attractions, detractions, and needs. Because of location, the university area neighborhoods have been especially hard-hit by development pressures and poor process and need immediate relief. I support restriction of flag lot development in those neighborhoods for that reason. I am not in favor of a citywide ban on flag lots, however, that seem largely predicated on the experience and location of the university area neighborhoods. Their experience may be a bellwether, but it doesn't justify a one-size-fits-all response that can potentially penalize someone like me, a homeowner, not a developer, in a different neighborhood in another part of town, who has a large property and wants to preserve the option of a second home for reasons my husband outlined. Instead of banning flag lots citywide as a place to start, we need to start with a citywide collaborative look at secondary dwellings and flag lots, a timely, legitimate, transparent, public process that consider land use regulations and changes and the inevitable and ever-increasing development pressures, with common sense, foresight, and due process that take into account the character, integrity, and unique features of every neighborhood within the larger vision for Eugene. This dual approach to address further flag lot development, where we know overbuilding is occurring and causing problems, and to step back and look at the issue more holistically for the city as a whole, is both responsive to our university area neighbors and most respectful, open, and fair for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mia Nelson is next, followed by Carolyn Jacobs.
Good evening, I'm Mia Nelson. I'm representing 1,000 Friends of Oregon, PO Box 51252 in Eugene. Last year, I urged you to consider some changes to the original R1 code amendments, because a neighborhood leader had assured me that he wanted a win-win to resolve those neighborhood concerns and substantially increase infill capacity. But after reviewing this new proposal, I am disappointed, and I'm also a little bit angry, because this isn't a win-win by any stretch. If you adopt this, the only winners will be those who want to reduce or prevent infill, and I think everyone else will lose. This is a reckless and one-sided proposal that makes every one of Eugene's existing problems worse, and then does nothing to mitigate these negative effects. Let's consider UGB efficiency. The loss of this capacity will lead directly to a larger UGB expansion. That's something I know many of you want to avoid. Connect the dots. Nothing in land use happens in a vacuum. If you care about preventing sprawl, then this is a terrible proposal. Consider climate change. The council's right now considering mandatory GHG reductions. How is Eugene going to get there with proposals like this one? Why bother adopting these goals to reduce driving if the city's on-the-ground policies deliberately force growth to the outskirts of town? Consider affordable housing. Small infill units are one of the best ways we have to make small, close-in, affordable housing available. Eugene should do more to consider these SDUs, to encourage these SDUs and not less. I don't know how you can even consider making this harder. But as bad as these problems are, here's one that's much worse. The public process on this is just appalling. This proposal is going to gut the rights of at least 5,000 homeowners to have an SDU, severely limit the rights of thousands more, and yet, those who are most affected have been caught off guard and placed at a strategic disadvantage by the process itself. This proposal is nothing like the one that the Planning Commission considered. It just parachuted in at the last moment and bypassed all the normal channels of process. Affected citizens have had, you heard it, two weeks to get up to speed and counter the efforts of much more politically savvy neighborhood activists who have been working on this for years, and they know how to be heard. So please protect your silent constituency, the regular folks who aren't even here tonight, because they don't know that this is going to matter to them until 10 years from now, when their aging mother needs a place to go. And that's when they're going to discover that back in 2014, they lost the right to build her an SDU, because nobody was looking out for them. You know, it is, it's too bad that this new proposal isn't a real win-win, but I've -- look, there's nothing worth saving in this proposal. It just makes too many other problems worse. It hurts too many people without adequate reasons. And I have searched for things to save from this, but I think unfortunately, there's nothing to do but toss the thing out and go back to the old proposal.
Thank you. Carolyn Jacobs is next, followed by Bill Aspergen.
Carolyn Jacobs, 2040 Aggett Street, Ward 3. My comments tonight are addressed to you, Mayor and City Council, of course, but also to the people who emailed me and others who submitted their comments into the public record. It seems that some serious confusion has resulted from the notices mailed to R1 property owners, as well as the recipients of city-generated emails. Let me begin by clearly stating that the 3,100 square footage required for an R1 dwelling unit, and double that for a second unit, did not originate with any neighborhood advocates, not in the university area or anywhere else in the city. We didn't make it up. We didn't pull it out of thin air. It's not new, and it's not a change of any sort. The density standards which generate the square footage have been in the city code for anyone to read for years. It states precisely that all dwellings shall meet the maximum density standard of 14 units per net acre. Whether it's a small house sharing a lot with a bigger house, or one sitting on an independent lot, the Eugene Code does not anywhere exempt any dwelling units from conforming to maximum density standards. Perhaps even more importantly, the purpose of the Eugene Code is to -- Eugene R1 zone standards are to implement the overarching metro plans, LDR, Low Density Residential Designation, which calls for a similar maximum density of 14.28 units per net acre. Ignoring these standards, ignoring the standards in these two legal documents is unjustifiable and really unacceptable. It also reveals an unspoken policy shift toward favoring the upzoning of R1 neighborhoods. The metro plan and the Eugene Code are very clear about density standards, so the R1 code amendments under consideration now only urge you to keep them front and center and to enforce them. As a community, we always have the option of amending the metro plan, but that's not what's under consideration at this time. Now admittedly, the entire R1 package is very protective of neighborhood livability, but as we have said repeatedly over the years, one size does not fit all. I urge you to pass these standards and then create a process whereby each and every neighborhood has the opportunity to generate changes in the details to address their specific situations. Thank you.
Bill Aspergen is next, followed by Barb Prentice.
Hi, I'm Bill Aspergen. I live in Eugene in Allen Zelenka's Ward 3. You have before you an ordinance that updates the single-family R1 code amendments. I first became involved with these changes seven years ago as part of the ICS Single Dwelling Committee. It's been a long journey, obviously. However, the final product, which you have in front of you, which includes recommendations suggested by neighborhood leaders from 16 neighborhoods, is excellent, despite what Mia says. I think it's a very good set of standards. I urge the City Council to approve the ordinance without changes, although a good set of standards for -- I could accept a good set of standards for flag lots, SDUs on flag lots, large flag lots. So I think that might be something to consider. In addition, I have a related request. I've read the written testimony included in your meeting materials. Of the 12 parties commenting, discussed, they all discussed increasing the lot size for SDUs and how this was going to create sprawl. I understand the city has a legal obligation to notify affected neighbors of the lot size change, but I think the city had a responsibility to explain why the changes are being made and that it is unlikely to affect the UGB and create sprawl. I think to shirk this responsibility, just for the obligation that they had to do it, is not fair to the neighbors. As Carolyn mentioned, the metro plan in Eugene's Code defines R1 density requirements, and this hasn't changed. However, the city has not enforced these density requirements with respect to SDUs. The code changes will bring the city into compliance with the metro plan and Eugene's Varium Code. After the notification was sent out, Sona and Fermi received an irate email and had to explain the reasons for the changes to the sender. This is not our job, okay? Therefore, in addition to passing the ordinance, with minimal changes for flag lots potentially, I request that the council direct the staff to contact the people that were originally receiving the notification and explain to them why the changes are being recommended, explain that SDUs are still allowed, because there seems to be some questions about that, explain that SDUs are expected to be less than 1% of the projected 20-year housing need, and explain that this need, and explain that this change should not affect the UGB and sprawl. As a last thing, I'd just like to thank everyone that's worked on this, these ordinances. It's been a long, a long journey, as I said, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Barbara Prentice is next, followed by Sue Pritchard.
Barb Prentice, I live in Greg Evans Ward. Before I knew about this public hearing, I had sent you all a link to an article about microhousing in Portland. I've been encouraged by the mayor's earlier positive words about microdwellings. I want to thank Alyssa Hanson of the Planning Commission for alerting me to this hearing and encouraging me to come and speak. What I'm going to do, you all received this today, but I'd like to read this letter that Andy Heben wrote. Andy is the, is a, one of the architects of Opportunity Village Eugene, and he's an urban planner. Dear Mayor and City Council, I'm writing to oppose the proposed amendments to the R1 zoning code regarding accessory dwelling units. At a time when progressive cities like Portland are finally recognizing the importance of ADUs to the point that they are now incentivizing the development of ADUs, does the city of Eugene really want to go the opposite direction with regressive policies such as these? I am fine with limiting the overall size of ADUs, but we should not be, what we should not be doing is limiting a property owner's right to build an ADU. Of particular concern are increase the minimum lot size required for a secondary dwelling, prohibit secondary dwellings on flag lots, not allow for the creation of new alley-access lots, limit the extents of adjustment review. Instead, like Portland, we should make it easier. ADUs offer some of the most affordable rental housing in the city, and unlike conventional affordable housing, they can be built independent of government subsidy. So at a time when the city has recognized the need to expand affordable housing without the funds to do so, these policies would be very hypocritical and counterintuitive. As a board of Eugene, as a board member of Opportunity Village Eugene, I try to help transition people out of homelessness. These policies make this an even greater challenge by further limiting affordable housing options. I think Alan Durning does well, Alan Durning, sorry, does well in summing up the logic behind this, so I will quote him here. "The gauntlet of rules that keep accessory apartments and cottages so rare are not a small-time concern." I'm not going to be able to finish all this. I'm going to read the, just the, "Yet the northwest, the only path of urban development that can lead to affordability and climate and energy security, not to mention that can adopt this, adapt the 7 million detached houses already built across the region for shrinking households and aging populations, is open to single-family neighborhoods to more residents." Accessory dwelling-
Thank you, Barb.
-is the main political plausible way to do that, and I'm going to ask this.
Thank you. Sue Pritchard is next, followed by Larry Robbins and Patricia Toledo.
Good evening. I'm Sue Pritchard, and I live in Allen-Zelenka's Ward. First of all, I want to thank you very much for the work that you've done on the interim protection measures, which are huge in the neighborhood I live in, Amazon, and Sona and Fairmont as well. It's giving us a breather, and I think it's going to be an opportunity to do some really excellent planning for those neighborhoods that are most profoundly affected by the impact of the growth of the University of Oregon. This is a really complicated issue, and I have fluctuated a bit on some of my feelings about it. I recently wrote you all an email with great detail about exactly where I agreed and disagreed and didn't agree with either the ordinance or the neighborhood recommended amendments. So I don't want to go through all that again tonight, but I do want to say that I am concerned about the fact that there's a bit of overreaching being done with the neighborhood recommendations. I'm concerned that it's, it's too much like what's happening in the interim protection measures, which is actually to solve a very serious problem. Not that there aren't serious problems in other neighborhoods, because I know there are, but I think that we need to make a differentiation between the two extremes, and I'm concerned that the recommendation as put forth right now is a little bit too extreme. Specifically, I believe that the recommendation for increasing lot size is a bad move. As most of you know, I was involved in the Infill Compatibility Standards Task Team. I was also on the citizen committee that involved a lot of architects and developers and builders who reviewed those recommendations, and then I am currently on the Technical Resource Group. I see that these answers are not easy because one recommendation leads to a problem over here, this recommendation leads to a problem over there. It's just not a simple solution. My comments tonight are really just to ask you to stand back and take a little bit of a fresh look and try to make sure that the implications are not too serious once the decisions are made. And finally, my recommendation is that we should be, we should be enforcing the existing code much more effectively than we are right now. And I have said this from the very beginning, that many of the problems that are obvious in the Amazon neighborhood right now could be solved if the current code were enforced effectively and proactively. So I don't want us to overreact too much. I think we have some good tools there that if they were actually used effectively could solve some of the problems. So best wishes. This is not an easy decision. I appreciate all the time you're spending on it, and I look forward to working with you in the future on the infill, on the interim protection measures. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Robbins and Patricia Toledo are next, followed by William Randall.
My name is Larry Robbins. This is my wife, Patricia Toledo.
Can I hear you, Larry?
My name is Larry Robbins. This is my wife, Patricia Toledo. We live at 2820 High Street in Councilor Taylor's Ward. I, like a lot of people here, became aware of this issue when we received the notice some two weeks ago, and entered my education in land use policy. It was like stepping into the deep end of an Amazon pool. I went to the city planning office, and I was told that this idea originated with one of the neighborhood associations. Being a bit of a hothead, I fired off one of those emails that a couple of the witnesses have mentioned, and I got, got some very gracious responses, and I want to thank those people, including Ms. Jacobs, for her gracious response. Still, I'm opposed to this. I started some, doing some research. I live in the neighborhood between Willamette Street and Amazon Parkway. I initially started studying the area between those two streets, 28th and 29th. There are 80 residential lots. Four of them would be affected by this change. One of them, two of them have duplexes. One of them already has a secondary dwelling, and the fourth is mine. And we currently have no plans for building a secondary dwelling, but I don't want that ability to do that lost. I feel like it's a right that we have, and we do have an aging, two aging mothers that at some point in the future, we might like to have come and live with us. I started looking further north of us towards 24th Avenue. I did not count the total number of dwellings. I would estimate there to be about 100 lots in that area, and there's probably a dozen that would be affected by this. In that process, some, about six of those lots are on 24th Place. On the corner of 24th Place and Willamette Street, there's a 12-new, three-story, 12-unit townhouse complex with six parking places, and it's pet-friendly with no lawn. I said that learning about planning policy was a bit like stepping into the deep end of Amazon pool. I'm confused. I am conflicted. I do believe that there should be sensible land use policy regarding infill. I certainly want, want all of my neighborhoods to start erecting apartments in their backyards. It would affect the livability and parking in our neighborhood. But as I stated, this change is only going to affect four lots out of 80 in our neighborhood. One-size solution does not fit all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say it's not fair. It's our private residential-
Time's up. No, she's, oh, sorry. They're not, they signed up together. Make it-
There are a few seconds, and nine, but that's okay.
William Randall is next, followed by Paul Conti.
My name is William Randall. I'm an architect and senior principal with Arbor South Architecture, 380 Lincoln Street. I am here tonight speaking to you as one who has designed many single-family homes in the Eugene area in the last 30 years, and one who has been deeply and passionately involved in the recommendations sent to you by the Planning Commission. My first assignment as a planning commissioner, when in 2010, was the R1 Infill Flag Lot Implementation Team, and in that subcommittee, we started the process, which led to the Single Family Advisory Group, which in 2012 looked further at the single-family recommendations sent to you through the commission late last year. I give you this background to underscore the incredible amount of time, energy, investigation, discussion, and vetting that went into the single-family code amendments that came to you last month. As a member of that process, almost from the beginning, I can assure you that many different scenarios were discussed at length. We looked at and vetted many different design options, discussing the what-ifs, and then we came to consensus. We investigated big-picture ideas and the concept of how SDUs, alley-access homes, and accessory buildings were used, the impacts they might have on neighboring homes and lots, and how to actually create a set of code criteria that would allow the use, minimize the adverse impacts on the neighbors, and at the same time, reduce or eliminate the temptation to illegally create these building types. We recognize that one size does not fit all, and that an SDU is a different building type and a use as an alley-access home, and both of those are different from accessory buildings. That's why the recommendations sent to you through the Planning Commission had slight variations in the requirements for each building type. We spent hours and hours discussing and considering those recommendations. And that is where I have concerns and why I'm here tonight, urging you to return your discussion to the recommendations forwarded by the Planning Commission, not the February 16th recommendations. I outlined my observations about those changes in my communication to you on May 13th. Specifically, increasing lot size requirement to 6,100 square feet will preclude SDUs on so many lots as to effectively undo the entire SDU concept. The 800-square-foot limit is fair, reasonable, and much simpler to communicate to the public and enforce than the 10% limit. The sloped setback with a starting point of eight feet is too low. Most homes in this area are built above crawl spaces and have at least eight-foot ceiling heights. In fact, current homes usually have nine-foot ceiling heights. That was something our committee looked at, at how we arrived at the 12-foot spring height. Alley homes are a different housing type than SDUs. Our committee took that into consideration. SDUs are inherently tied to the main house, while an alley home is much more likely to be an owner-occupied home. That was why we recommended different standards. Accessory buildings are not dwellings and never should be, so the committee set different standards for that building type, too. And throughout all of this, the committee's discussion was to make the standards for each building type reasonable so that people wouldn't be tempted to illegally convert one building type into another. My concern is if the latest proposed standards are implemented, we will see accessory dwellings built then illegally converted to SDUs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Conti is next, followed by Tim Schennerberger.
Good evening, mayor and councilors. My name is Paul Conti. I live at 1461 West 10th Avenue. I'm in Ward 1, and I hope I have a little time to offer some observations, but first, I wanted to request that the record be left open for a week. And I think that week would be productive. It might give Ms. Nelson a chance to discover some more boogeymen under the tables and in backyards. But more productively, I think that we can come to a fix on the flag lot situation. I'm hoping staff will appreciate this, those of us that worked on this, from, and we've been working on it for years, not weeks. Sometimes make mistakes, and that was definitely one of the mistakes, was to not, not have enough time to look at the provisions there and open it up. I was real pleased that Dean and Cindy Hale started off the testimony because they have been in discussions with me today, and I've been in discussions with other neighborhood leaders, and I think we're very close to something that will essentially open up flag lots over 13,54 SDUs. But we need a little time to work it out, and if you close the hearing tonight, we won't be able to present that to you. And that's an example of the way this process ought to work. You know, it really should have had people into discussion, this whole thing about the process. This has been in the works among neighborhood advocates and leaders for years, and we were shut out of the process by the planning staff and the Planning Commission as it flowed through. So on flag lots, I think we can solve that problem, and I'm looking forward to it. On SDUs, look, the issue isn't about whether SDU should be allowed on lots that are 4,500 square feet. I really don't think there's a lot of objection to that, as long as the standards are right. And for instance, Ms. Pritchard was way off-base when she attacked the 10% standard and some of the other limits. The way that you can allow SDUs on smaller lots is to have good standards that shrink the scale of these things as the lot shrinks. The problem with SDUs is that it's not legal to be letting people have building permits for lots that are between 4,500 and 6,100 square feet. So if you want them to be allowed at 4,500 feet, just take the action you need to do that, which is amend the metro plan. It would take about two lines of text there. We proposed that in the summer, but staff shut it down, and they've been just giving you a bunch of bull about how you can do this legally. If you don't enforce it in the code, what you're going to do is put the homeowners at risk in, if they go to get a building permit and their next-door neighbor is ticked off and doesn't like it, that neighbor's going to be able to successfully take them to Luba and tie them up, at least, if not get it rejected. Look, these standards are very reasonable, and they can be worked out and tweaked. And really, the thing to do is to pass these standards and then initiate a short process right afterwards to make a few of the fixes that need to be made. Thanks.
Tim Schennerberger is next, followed by Ed McMahon.
Mayor and councilors, my name's Tim Schennerberger. I live in Ward 3. The words Mr. Hale presented, I really appreciated that. I am not, I hope that if there's a resolution on flag lots, that there will be consideration of setbacks, the way the process has worked with setback consideration for the university neighborhoods. And I'm sure that that wouldn't be an issue for you because you've got, because you're a compassionate person, that wouldn't be an issue. You would respect your neighbors. Not all developers respect their neighbors. I live in the south university neighborhood. The issues, you know, those are my battles. I don't want more parties in my backyard, you know, coming in over the fence. There's things that will present negative consequences that adjacent or nearby property owners could do that will lower my quality of life and my wife's, and I want to avoid those. Every time something changes with the code that's going to supposedly help us be a more progressive place with compact development and something, a developer finds a way to make money off it and shoehorns bad development into my neighborhood. Those are my concerns, and I hope you'll address those in whatever you adopt. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Ed McMahon is next, followed by Angela Rooney.
Good evening, mayor, council. Ed McMahon, I'm proud to be the executive director of the Home Builders Association of Lane County, located at 1065 River Road. I first became familiar with the single-family code amendments through the Envision Eugene as a member of the Technical Resource Group. Next, I witnessed the Planning Commission deliberations on the proposed land use amendments. All commissioners became very well-firstr on the subject. They asked good questions, and that led to productive discussions, which, in my opinion, led to a reasonable decision. In fact, I thought the Planning Commission made your job easy. Then just recently, I became familiar with the alternative proposal that isn't anything close to what the Planning Commission recommended. From increasing minimum lot size, to limiting building size to 10% of the lot size, to prohibiting secondary dwelling units on flag lots, I could go on and on. Instead, I'm here to ask that you please realize that the alternative proposal is a dramatic change, that if it is considered, needs much more public process. I'm concerned that several property owners have not had sufficient notice to have their voices heard. Thousands of property owners will be affected. I would also ask that you consider the fact that single-family dwelling units, alley-access lots, are an excellent opportunity to build affordable housing, something we direly need. We should be influencing this type of development- We should be influencing this type of development as opposed to restricting it. And in closing, I would like to state that it's my personal opinion that we would not be here this evening and having to deal with conflicting testimony if the code wasn't forced appropriately. Thank you.
Angela Rooney is our last speaker. Angela? No? No? Okay. Thank you, anyway. So we're going to close the public hearing and ask for questions and comments from City Council. Counselor Clark.
Mayor, I move to leave the record open for an additional week.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any disagreement with that? I don't see any. Okay.
It's a motion.
It's a motion?
We still have to vote.
Don't vote. Okay. All those in favor? Everybody? Good. Okay.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay. And then you had a motion you wanted to make?
Yep.
We are, but we're-
So I'm not sure I've got the exact language of what I'd like to make the motion on, but um- You do?
Yeah.
I'll defer to my colleague, Counselor Clark.
Well, I think our attorney had some language.
Right. Jerry, why don't you share that with everybody?
Do I?
I'll, I'll take that. Thank you. Okay.
Move to approve an ordinance concerning-
I move to adopt Council Bill 5119, an ordinance concerning commercial redesignation and rezoning of the Willamette Stationers' property.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments, questions? Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor, none in opposition? All right. There you go. No, no clapping, no hooting. We don't do that.
Even when we're that happy?
Even when you're that happy.
Even when you're happy.
No, we don't do that.
You're happy, and you know it. No, I'm sorry.
We do do this. Okay. All right. So that's the ends of business for today, unless anybody has anything else. Thank you all very much for coming.